It is 5:30, everyone. Thank you for coming, and we will call this meeting to order. If we could all stand and say the pledge to this flag right here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The flag is identified, so we're all saying.
All right.
Well, it's hilarious. So 20 people were facing different directions.
That one has a state flag there, too, so it would be recognized.
Chris, I'll have you take the vote.
Councilmember Basu.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Councilmember Cavanis.
Here.
Mayor Johnson. Acknowledge Councilmember Galloway to serve as mayor pro tempus in this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I would entertain an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Basu.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis.
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on an authorization of a loan agreement and issuance of notes not to exceed 800,000 to evidence the obligation of the city they're under.
I would want to public here, and Cole or Zach just start it.
Of course, this is for the vote for the compactor out of the landfill, as it is an immediate meeting, that's why we are here on a special meeting. The current unit is failed, with repair costs beyond the benefit of retaining the unit. The Solid Waste Commission is recommending to purchase an Aljon ADV 500 landfill compactor for a base price of $733,756 through a qualified bank loan. The loan is considered general obligation debt, and proceedings to enter the document, into the document must follow the IO code on issuance of debt. That's why we're holding a public hearing. The estimated loan will be completed within 60 days of the purchase, and a reimbursement resolution is not needed as of right now.
Will the county be sharing this cost also?
All the payments on the loan will be made from landfill revenue.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Zach, do you have anything you want to add?
I would just say, mostly for Keith's benefit, he was not able to make the Solid Waste meeting, that we did have a lot of kind of dialogue back and forth. There was one other compactor that was a little bit competitive on cost, and the commission decided to stay with Aljon. And there's a couple of reasons. First, they've been really helpful with us on the issues with the current one. They gave us a loaner for free, and they brought it up from Georgia. While we were looking at the replacement, they gave a good price on trade-in. They're including the fire suppression, which makes the cost more or less equal. And they did do a discount on filters, which is about $20,000 to $25,000 for the lifeless piece of equipment, just the value of the filter is five, four times that. So we appreciated that, and then, of course, they also are going to be able to service it locally, which in terms of travel time and downtime, with having to wait for somebody to come from Des Moines or elsewhere, I think having a local service is going to help a lot on cost.
And they're also a local company.
Exactly, exactly. The salesman, when he heard we were looking at the other one, compared it to living in Detroit, buying a Toyota when we can, you know, drive a Ford.
That would be his approach.
Any further questions for Zach or Cole? Hearing none, I would enter. Oh, sorry, anyone from the public?
No.
Okay, now, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to oppose the public hearing.
Motion opposed.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Basu.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis.
Yes.
Resolution number 189, 2024, instituting proceedings to the judicial action for the issuance of not to exceed 800,000 general obligation capital loan notes for acquisition of a landfill compactor and essential corporate purpose. Recommendation passed and adopted, resolution number 189, 2024.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
What about a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Zach, there was one thing that you didn't mention, I think it's really important, and that is if they allowed us $150,000 on the trade, taking the old one back in.
Right.
And that's not a small change, although I'm sure they can rebuild it and mix it up a lot, so.
Yeah, yeah, and we appreciate that. It's also going to be a challenge for them because the equipment is broken down on the pile, and they're not exactly sure how they're going to recover their trade yet, because you can't just tow it. So we're gonna, we might experience them de-manufacturing and taking it away in pieces, so.
I think they, when they move those, they move them with three semis.
Probably.
The wheels have to come off, the compactor has to come off, and then the machine part by itself, so.
Okay, Chris?
Councilmember Basu.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis.
Yes.
Resolution number 198, 2024, authorizing the purchase of an Aljon series 500 landfill compactor in the amount of $733,756 for the Ottenawakalo County landfill. Recommendation passed and adopted, resolution number 198, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Zach, if you're sold, do you have anything to add?
This is just the resolution authorized. We will have to do a budget amendment within the landfill. I'm already planning a budget amendment for December because we had some construction projects that weren't completely budgeted for in 2025 because they overran from 2024.
But you got it all in hand, right?
I'm trying to. Taking copious notes on all these different projects.
Anyone else have anything for Cole or Zach? Hearing none.
Councilmember Basu.
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis.
Yes.
Humana Group Medicare Advantage plan in the middle of discussion. Recommendation received information from HR and finance. Open discussion with correction on how to proceed provided by city council. You don't need a motion or a second, so you can.
And so, the first thing I want to start off with, I've got a PowerPoint with all of these figures, and there's a lot of numbers and things that are here. The reason that I do not have this printed out for you to take is it is confidential and proprietary information from Humana. So this is more for discussion and for us to talk about as far as the insurance goes, so. Just to, so everybody is aware, the, what this is, is this is our renewal for Humana. Humana is our insurance for retirees over 65 years of age. So just kind of as a, to let everybody know where we're at now. Employees that were hired prior to February 22 of 1993 are provided health insurance coverage until their death. We currently have about, it's either five or six employees that are currently employed with the city of Ottenawakal that this will affect. I believe total, we've got about 103 people that overall this affects. So people that have worked for the city previously and have retired. In 1993, this ordinance was passed, or this resolution was passed, that this would no longer, there would no longer be insurance coverage for those that retired from the city. So if they are a retiree under the age of 65, the coverage right now is the same as our current active employees, and whatever they retire with, that's what they can continue on with. So if, when they reach retirement age, if it is employee plus spouse, they are eligible to retire with insurance of employee plus spouse, and we will cover both the employee plus the spouse until, until death. The, if they have a surviving spouse, which we do have a couple of those, where a spot where the employee has actually passed away while they were either employed with the city or they're soon after they retired, again, we cover that surviving spouse until their death. In those instances, the city does pay 90% of those insurance rates. And the retiree pays 60% of that premium, and then the city pays 40% if it's the retiree and retiree plus spouse. The city does pay for dental for retired employees. We do not pay for spouse, but dental coverage is offered to the retiree themselves. Retirees 65 and over, so that means that they are Medicare eligible. We do have, this is a supplemental plan. They do have to sign up for Medicare. There's, I think it's Medicare Part B that they have to sign up for, and then they can elect to also take the supplemental plan that we have. The retiree pays 40% of that premium, and the city pays 60% of that premium. The other thing that the city does offer to all retirees, again, prior to that 1993 timeframe, is there is a $4,000 life insurance policy that is for each retiree that is paid for by the city. So annual cost for retiree benefits is that $228,960. That is as of this year. That is what our annual costs are for retiree insurance. So this just kind of breaks down, we talked, I talked here about the different types of coverage that there are available. So like for the current, for retirees under 65, we have nine people total. That's about, that's $44,000 annually that we pay there. You can see, you know, employee plus spouse, surviving spouse, and the employee. You can see the total broken down by, paid by employee and employer. This is our retiree 65 and over, so what we're going to talk about tonight affects this group of people right here directly. So right now, it's 176,000 that the city pays annually for, for this coverage. Dental, the dental coverage costs us $7,300 annually, and then the life insurance is under $1,000 annually. So these three slides here is what actually makes up this $228,960. So that's where we're at currently with all of our plans. One other thing to note is with, the reason that we're talking about Humana right now is because the Medicare supplement plans renew in January, where our retirees under 65 renew when our regular employees, which is in July. So that's why we're talking about Humana right now. We got rates this year from, we got this actually a week and a half, two weeks ago, I think, from Humana. One of the things that they notified us of is that there were national changes that were made to Medicare, specifically regarding Part D, which is prescription coverage. The CMS, which is the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, there's three major changes that they made to it. Essentially, what it was, was a lot of this was passed back in 2022, and it was kind of like a gradual, and so by the end of '24, all of these changes were going to take place as of the beginning of '25. What happens now with Medicaid, with prescription coverage is, I, and I apologize, I don't know exactly what the number is, but essentially from zero to, say, $1,000, your prescriptions are covered at a certain percentage. And then they have what they call the donut hole, which is, it's a gap coverage, where if, say, from $1,000 to $8,000, your prescriptions are not covered at all. Like you will have to pay out of pocket for those. And then anything over $8,000, they consider that catastrophic coverage. The 8,000, it's not necessarily what you pay out of pocket, but it's what you pay along with what your insurance pays with what any other discounts or anything like that pays. So the big change that was made this year is, so now it is going to be $2,000 catastrophic coverage. So instead of it being 8,000, it's now 2,000. So they've gotten rid of that, that very large gap with that. And then they also eliminated the donut hole, the coverage gap that they have. So instead of a coverage gap, now there's going to be discount plans that is, that are going to offer discounts to different insurance. This is a benefit for the person that is covered under the plan. With that, of course, is going to come increased costs, so. Those are the big changes. Those are things that are going to happen no matter what. So no matter what direction is given or what plan is decided, this is going to happen for anybody that is on that Humana plan. So I kind of jumped the gun, I'm sorry. So here are the renewals. You can see for Wellmark, which is the ones under 65, we renew that on July 1 of every year. That is also part of our regular city employee insurance, and then the Humana renew is January 1 of each year. So for Wellmark, the employee pays 60%, employer pays 40%. For Humana, those are flipped. I have no idea the reasoning behind it. We cannot find any reasoning behind it. We've searched for resolutions or what, we don't know. That's what was decided at that time, so. Can you say at that time? 93, or at some point between 93 and now. We can't find anything. We can't find a resolution or anything as to why that was decided or not. About four years ago, when insurance was up, up for discussion and stuff, and we were looking at different plans. Humana was not part of that discussion. It was about four or five years ago. Well, they switched to Humana, was it four years ago, I think?
Four years ago.
Yeah, because it was right before I came on board. I know they switched to Humana, and the intent was, because Humana had offered some different things and lower prices than what they had previously. I'm not sure what they had for Humana. I don't know if you, yeah, I don't know. So. So with this, with those changes, what Humana has provided to us is that we are going to see an 18.33% increase in our rates for coverage. Of course, like I said, because of that prescription coverage, I mean, that's a, that's a savings to the members, but it's going to come at a, at a cost for us. So you can see here, this was when, so $209 was the monthly premium. This is the total monthly premium that the city was paying. That was the year that we switched to Humana. Again, unfortunately, I don't have the information from anything prior to that. Based on our historic rate increases, based on the information that we had had at the time of budgeting from Gallagher, which is the third-party benefits administrator, we had budgeted a 5% increase. So what that difference is, is that's $23,564. That was not budgeted in FY '25 for this increase.
Are there, are there any other choices?
Yeah, I'm going to get to that.
Sorry.
But yeah, that's okay. So this is what we will see for, if we stick with this current plan, this is what we will see. So these are retiree costs right here. These are what the city costs are. So that $179,000, that's actually going to go up. Total cost would be $209,000 per year for the city if we stick with this. And that is just for this year, not knowing what our potential increases could be for next year or the year after, and that could be just compounded upon that. So what this means, the, one of the big concerns that we talked about is what this means for the retirees as well as for the city. So right now, retirees per, per retiree, it's $95.32 a month. It's going to go up to $112.80, so it's a difference of $17 per month per retiree, which is a difference of $209 annually. For the city, you can see it's an additional $314 per retiree. Again, our concern, and one of the things that we have talked about, was those that are on a fixed income, what that, what that would do to them. Granted, yes, on that other side, there is going to be better prescription coverage, but what does that offset? The prescription coverage would be, what we've seen a lot for is those that are diagnosed with diabetes, so they have insulin. They, high blood pressure, things like that, people that are on a lot of medication, so. So we've got some options, and this is what we wanted to present to you also. There's no decision that's being made tonight, but it's just presenting some options to you to kind of get you thinking about it, and then advise us as to what you would like to do. Option one is we can stay with the current plan. Option two, we could stay with the current plan but change the contribution percentage, and I'm going to go into more detail on these. One of the things, and then option three is to look at a different plan. So one of the things Humana had did was when they sent this to us and realized that it was an 18.3% increase, they also offered us other plan options that are there. So we'll go through and we'll take a look at that. One of the things we talked about with option three is what that will do by changing the plan. That would change some of the different deductibles, physician office visits, ambulance coverage, emergency room, medical out-of-pocket, things like that. So we had talked and Phil and Cole and I had spoken about if we did have any retirees that could, would want to opt out. If we did make that change to the plan and say that there's a retiree that would like to opt out of it, what we can do is we could actually explore the option of a retiree health reimbursement arrangement, which if you've ever had a flexible spending account, it's very similar to that, where it can pay for, like the city would say, "We're going to put $1,000 into this account every year for each retiree that chooses not to go with that," and they can utilize that, that spending account for different things pertaining to medical expenses, so. So option two, one of the things that we had talked about was to keep the same plan as current, but just adjust the contribution amount. Looking at that, that recommendation would be to split the contribution at 50/50. So currently, the retirees pay 40%, city pays 60%. This would result in about $2,400 savings per year from the current. It would add in about an additional $548 per year per member. So again, but just thinking of the fiscal responsibility that we have trying to save the city money or looking at that trust and agency levy, if we went this route of changing that contribution, instead of the $209,000, it'd be $174,000 a year that we would pay for this option. What was the annual amount for the employment option one? The annual amount? Or I guess monthly, and I can do the math. That's okay. It's one, it would be $112.80. $112.80. Thank you.
Well, then, and that creates an annual increase of $209.76.
Yeah. So then, this and this here shows, so this is your option two. If we adjust that contribution amount, the retiree cost, that goes up to $141 from the $112. And then you can see the city would actually save some money on this here. If we went this route, it would cost the retirees an additional $548 per member each year. The other.
Are there any of those people that are in contract that we would have to renegotiate the terms for that change in their share?
No, there's nothing that we have seen that, from the research that we have found, and we've worked with Gallagher, and no, there was not. So then option three, these are the different plans that they offer, and this is the, again, this information is proprietary and it is confidential. So they did say that it's, you know, for our use only. So these are the differences in the cost. So there's four different plans that they had offered. And you can see here, like, some of the different plans, this is the annual difference from the current, if we go to some of those. And then you've got your total annual cost for the employer. So we can reduce our costs here by quite a bit going to some of these different plans. The key for these, though, is some of the different coverages that are here. So in the middle there, you see what our current coverages are, our current deductibles and co-payments. And then each different plan has got different adjustments that are made. So, I mean, there's one of them that, like, the medical maximum out-of-pocket, instead of the $185, it actually goes up to $2,500. There's one of them that it's $4,000. And of course, those are going to coincide with, on that other slide, some of the differences in the annual cost there. With that, then, we had talked about with option three is going to this health reimbursement arrangement. The retiree could waive their participation in the plan. We have had retirees now that have dropped Humana because they have been able to find different Medicare programs, supplemental programs, that are actually better for them. If, if we were to go to option three and say we moved to one of those plans, the retiree could waive their participation in the plan, and then the city could contribute a set amount to this health reimbursement arrangement. The health reimbursement arrangement is only for the employer to put money in. Like the retiree cannot add money to it. It would just be for us, and we would set that amount to say, the city would set that amount to say, "We're going to put $1,000 every year into that." And then those are tax-free distributions used for medical expenses. So it could be the medical care, prescription draws, insurance premiums, anything like that. It works very similarly to a flex spending account that, that we would currently have. Would those funds roll over each year? They do. There are stipulations that it goes, I think it's only like two or three months that you have to utilize that. Again, very similar with the flex plans. So just kind of as a recap, you know, option one, you've got option two, and then option three is these different, the different plans that are there. So you can see that the, what the annual costs are to the employee, and then the annual cost to the employer, and what those would be. So really, what we're looking for, I mean, it's, the changes are going to happen. It's, it's going to be up to you all to provide us direction on, on where we want to go with the insurance renewal for the retirees.
One of the questions is, you know, as we've talked about, is where does the money come for the, for the amount that we didn't budget for, right? Well, we have reserves in our trust and agency that we use to back for claims. So we do, we, you know, we can absorb that about. The, the thing that we also look at is that, you know, we're getting 18% this year, and, you know, if we continue to get high increases, we're compounding upon that. Pretty soon, the $23,000 that we're short this year turns into $100,000 six, seven years down the road. And that all goes directly to, to property tax, because we levy for the benefits there. So this is the reason why we're bringing it forward. Now, one of the advantages of the savings account is that it becomes a fixed amount. If we put in, like, like Harp says, $1,000, it's $1,000 every year until the employee dies or the employee's spouse dies, right? But if it's $1,000, then it's fixed. There isn't an increase on it that we're compounding.
Is that $1,000 for the employee and the spouse? Or is it $1,000 each for employee and spouse?
It would, it would be, you know, that's, it's something we could talk about. But I think what we assumed was it would be $1,000 per plan, right? So if the plan is.
Between the two of them, it would cover.
Right.
And we, that can be structured any way that
Correct.
you would like to. If that were to be the route that we would go, we would work with Gallagher to source out the best plan that's there. They would take care of doing the RFP and everything for us on that.
Well, I am not a part of the city plan. I'm way too old for that. Anyway. However, my insurance and my supplemental is through Aetna, and that costs me nothing. And they pay for just about everything except during the donut hole program. I have one medication that goes from $47 to $147 for four months. But other than that, there's no participation for me for that insurance, and that's, that's a bargain as far as I'm concerned.
And Aetna is the name of the company that we've got a lot of retirees come off of our plan to go to.
I think mine was called Aetna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what, in your research, what is, so looking at these plans, what are you, if you had to go a certain way, what does that look like for you?
To be fiscally responsible, I think we've got to look at cutting our costs. I also understand those two, that, you know, keeping our existing plan would be a good option as well. I mean, it's almost like it's six of one, half of us and another, what we want to prioritize. If we want to prioritize cutting our costs, then we look at option two or option three. If we want to prioritize taking care of our retirees, you know, absorbing that cost, then it's going to be option one.
It could be someplace in between.
Or it could be someplace.
I was just going to say, we're replacing.
These are just options that, when we sat and talked, this was what came to mind for us, so.
The, the biggest problem with option three is we could actually pick a plan that would save everybody on premiums, including the employees, right?
The other parts.
But the, the other out-of-pocket costs go up dramatically.
Other questions, comments?
So, since you cannot provide this to us, how are we going to review it beyond this meeting?
Ask questions. I don't, if there's something further that you have.
Or if you'd like to come in and sit with us individually, that's a lovely thought.
No, it's okay.
Yeah.
We might do that.
Yeah. Ideally, we would look for some type of recommendation as to where you would like to go. Humana does want a pretty quick return on this, and so the intent would be to, based on whatever direction you provide to us tonight, we would bring that resolution onto the meeting next week on Tuesday.
And I'll be honest, I would like to see something kind of in the middle of these two options, too, because I understand we need to be fiscally responsible, too, and we can't have those growing increases. But we also need to take care of our employees, too, especially at this age, too, where, you know, we have medications and medical expenses, too.
Well, we did discuss of, perhaps if we switched to one of the different plans, and then also providing the savings account. The problem was is that The problem was is that whatever savings we, we would achieve. Yeah, yeah, we, we lose with the account, so. Because there's, because there's no guarantee that once we switch to these other plans that they don't, they don't go up, you know, as well. I've been around long enough where, where insurance companies get to a certain point, you switch to another insurance company because they're lower, well, three years later, that insurance company you switched from comes back in at a lower, at a lower price because they need you back, because everybody's switching off.
What about you three? Thoughts, direction?
I like number two.
Asked my question earlier, so I've kind of been thinking about it anyway, so. Going to a fifty-fifty split instead of the forty-sixty, number two? Because that's going to be the one that kind of meets in the middle, right?
Yes.
Yeah. That's something, I like the way you described it when we were talking about it, that we planned, we budgeted for that five percent. And then this was an extra, you know, eight percent that's on top of that. So we're absorbing, or not, thirteen percent. We are taking on essentially half of that difference and asking the members to take on the other half of that difference. And with the prescription drug coverage, I mean, that's a big change. And like you said, I mean, with that donut hole coverage that's there, now there's a discount that's there for the whole time.
And then option two, the, what I discussed, where it may be a little bit more money, but saves them in that regard.
Yeah.
Okay.
Overall, it's going to save them prescriptions. Yeah, definitely.
Well, it's like you and I talked, my concern on this is, you know, twenty bucks, maybe twenty bucks, but twenty bucks could be somebody's number for the mill or something.
Yes, yeah.
So you get a brochure for twenty bucks, but you don't know about it.
Some people, especially, you know, maybe, over that retiree, that might be all they have.
I'm just hoping, yeah.
No, no, you know what I'm saying. It's just, you know, things have gone so high.
Okay. Anything else?
So I just want clarification then. So for Tuesday, you would like us to bring back the resolution to change the contribution to, we'll continue with Humana with the plan that we have, but we will do the contribution at fifty-fifty, correct?
And Plan Two, right?
Plan Two.
That's Plan Two.
That's Plan Two, that's Option Two, correct.
Yeah.
That's the best one that meets the little little saves of.
Anything else? Any other questions? Oh, wait, that's you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'll move. Second.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.